I call the October 19, 2021 regular meeting of council to order. Councilperson Dowling will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling. Here. Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landig?
Here.
Mr. Marne?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Approval of minutes. Council, you receive the minutes of the October 5, 2021 work session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Abstain.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
The minutes of the October 5, 2021 work session have been approved. Council, you also are in receipt of the minutes of the October 5, 2021 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Abstain.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
The minutes of the October 5, 2021 regular meeting have been approved. Public hearings, we have none. Table legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 21-0-064.
An ordinance to authorize transfers of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. Members of council, this ordinance does two things. Firstly, it authorizes a permanent cash transfer out of the city's tax incremental financing fund to cover the city's portion of the state Route 615 resurfacing project. This effectively closes that project out. And then, secondly, it authorizes an appropriation revision to increase allowable spending out of our TIF fund for additional county auditor fees. We collected more than anticipated in our TIF fund this past year. Approximately $1.6 million was collected to that fund, and we need a little more money to pay the county. I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-064 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-065.
An ordinance amending the Lake Shore Highlands subdivision development plan to change the construction material of the central walking path and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this comes to you from the residence of Lake Shore Highlands. Ms. Mitchell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. Members of council, the Lake Shore Highlands Homeowners Association seeks to modify the approved site development plan for their subdivision by replacing the proposed crushed limestone walking path in the middle of the development with a concrete walkway. The walkway provides a straight path through the development and is located within the central open space. The approved plan had included a limestone path in this location as well as around the stormwater basin on the northeast side of the development. The HOA has indicated that the proposed material change to concrete is to reduce further maintenance costs and will be, in their minds, more aesthetically pleasing than the approved limestone. The walking path around the stormwater basin is already installed with crushed limestone and will remain. No other changes to the open space are proposed. At the September 30, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, the commission reviewed the proposed amendment and recommended approval of the material change to the central walking path to concrete by a vote of 7-0, with the conditions noted at the end of the staff report. We recommend approval as well.
Counsel?
I think it's a great idea.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-065 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-066.
An ordinance providing for a temporary pay increase for the clerk of council and declaring an emergency.
Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marne?
Yes, I would like some background on how this ordinance came before us.
I would defer to the law director for details on that.
Yes, Mr. President. Four members of council contacted my office indicating they were sponsoring the legislation. Based on that, I drafted it, reviewed it with the president of council, and that was how it made the agenda.
So it was put on by four members of council or was put on by the president of council?
Technically, the president of council approved this. Four members of council can request that legislation be drafted. That would happen by motion during the course of a meeting. In this instance, obviously, this was something that, well, actually, I can't say when it came up, but this was something that council had previously reviewed. And again, got direction from four members of council.
So when did council previously review this? Because we had an executive session that lasted over an hour and a half, and this was never finalized. And as you know, we can't put a vote, even a straw vote-
Correct.
-to an issue in an executive session.
Correct. It was drafted by my office after the executive session. Again, four members of council reached out indicating the support of something being drafted.
Okay. So one of the things that I brought up in the executive session was changing our hierarchy. As you know, we have a law director, we have city manager as an employee, and we have a clerk as an employee, and then changing that structure. And I was under the idea, as we left, that this would go on for further discussion. So four individuals came to you and said that this is going to be on our agenda.
No, I was requested to draft something. The president of council approves it for being placed on the agenda.
So with the information that's in here, what does, when we discussed how there's going to be different job duties for the clerk and also for the city administration, how they're going to do different things in order to make the process smoother, more efficient, correct? Is that part of the job description? What is the job description?
Right. Well, the contents of executive session, obviously, I'm not privileged to reveal those. This does nothing relative to the current organizational structure. This is just a temporary increase to the clerk of council, given the absence of any occupant for the assistant clerk of council position.
Assistant.
Correct. Anything beyond that is just outside the scope of this ordinance.
All right. So the clerk then is going to take over the responsibility of the assistant clerk until the assistant clerk is hired, and then the assistant clerk is changed, pardon me, trained, and then the change of duties may be different at that point? Or is it staying exactly the same?
Oh, that's for council to decide.
Okay.
This ordinance has no effect on division of labor currently.
So where did the four individuals come up with the percentage increase? And how was that determined?
I don't know. There was reference to a, this being, having occurred previously, and there being a previous pay, temporary pay increase under these set of circumstances.
Correct. And the last time we did this, I remember clearly, and we decided as a body of what the increase would be, and now we're not deciding as a body. It was put in front of us.
Well, the vote hasn't happened yet. It may fail, for all I know. Again, it was sponsored by four members.
Right, so it's not going to fail. Well, I've been put in a very peculiar position that I've never been put in before because you're asking me to vote on something that the first time I saw was on the agenda with no discussion. We have no discussion about exactly what the pay is going to be, about what the job's going to look like to go forward, about anything that is moving going forward with the new person that could possibly be hired, and we all talked about how tough it is in today's job market. So I don't know how an individual that run the city like a business, has always been my motto, can vote on something where we don't know exactly what it is. And I would expect, and I would offer you the same professionalism to everybody, for myself to be contacted besides Mr. Landig today, who couldn't answer any of my questions, or Mr. Zeeman couldn't answer any of my questions, decided what he just answered. So for that, I move to second the suspension.
I move to suspend.
And I move to second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Which are we voting on? Suspension or-
Suspension. Suspension.
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-066 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-067.
An ordinance enacting Section 121.06 of Part 1, Title V, amending Sections 1107.08 and 1129.04 of Part 11, Title 1 and Title 3 of the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended to permit the city manager to promulgate administrative fee schedules.
Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank Ms. Mitchell and the law director for helping us get this into a refined form to bring to your attention. You'll recall that we had a work session on this, and we indicated to council that it's been some years since we've reviewed our fees with respect to planning and building fees, and that it was past due. We had suggested to council that perhaps we treat these in a similar manner, that with other administrative fees that the council has given discretion to the administration to change to sort of keep them up to date, so to speak, whether that's green fees at the golf course or Marina fees, and in this case, planning fees. So working with the law director and the planning director, we proposed some changes. I think the law director made a good suggestion, which was to simply, rather than amend the code to enact specific dollar figures, simply allow for that discretion under the authority, under council's authority via code and pass that out to the administration. That's essentially what this does as well in 121.06 and then as well in 1107.08. It identifies what specific, in Sections 2 and 3, rather, of your ordinance, it specifically states what, with respect to the planning and zoning fees, exactly what charges we would be assigning fees to. As your, as your ordinance suggests and the staff report suggests, we would be assigning those fees on a regular basis, similar to how we do in another, in fashion with others. We would be calculating what we believe is the reasonable cost for us to provide those services, and we would maintain a record of that on file if ever needed to be reviewed. And I think at the last meeting, there was an interest in seeing a general idea from council as to what we would likely be moving these fees to. That's attached to the planning director's memo. I'll let her make some comments on that if she would like to, Ms. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. To add to your comments, we've been reviewing these for quite some time, in part taking a look at the time we spend on evaluating and reviewing permit applications that come in, also with regard to the fact that what other communities in the region are charging, taking a look very specifically at the fact that the fees for the city have not been updated since 1982. So it's been some time, and so some of the fees might be a little bit more, I guess, I don't say, for lack of a better word, substantial than others, but I think they will, once they are agreed upon, will be definitely reflective of the time that has passed and also the time and effort that we put in to reviewing the applications than as they do right now. So a lot of them are just very much under-valued.
So council, this is a general idea of where they're likely to go. It won't be exactly, it won't exactly look like this, but it's a general idea. Our intention is to refine that schedule internally before we adopt it, and it wouldn't take effect until January 1. I know the council was sensitive to the idea that we would be changing fees in the middle of the normal construction season, so we'll probably intend to have these refined by the end of at least November to give at least a 30-day period before they take effect, so probably January.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-067 has been approved. Second reading, there are none. Third reading, ordinance number 21-0-059.
An ordinance amending Part 9, Title 1, Sections 919.01, 919.03, and 919.99 of the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended, related to permit issuance for the removal of a tree within the public right-of-way or upon public land, increasing the penalties for violating Sections of Chapter 919 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zeeman, could you please give us a synopsis of where we are after council's last work session on this topic?
Yes, council discussed making the degree of offense as still an unclassified misdemeanor, and that's really hallmark by there being no potential jail penalty imposed. So subsequent to the work session, some potential amended language for Section 919.99 was submitted to the council members. That would remove any classified misdemeanors, and there would simply be unclassified misdemeanors for violations of the various sections under Chapter 919, and the maximum penalty would be a $2,000 fine. Also restitution, meaning if it's a city tree, for example, that was taken down on city property, restitution for the value of that tree could be recouped.
Thank you.
Mr. President, real quick. Mr. Zeeman, if we wanted to go back and revisit this a year or two down the road, what would be the process?
Just another ordinance to review amending it further.
And then, would there be anything more with the administration and/or court system?
You know, we're happy to report how things go in terms of whether enhancing the penalty has been an aid to enforcement, or whether we're still running into some of the challenges that were discussed previously, you know, before the council. You know, again, we really don't know what type of deterrent effect something will have until it plays out in the real world. So we'll keep an eye on the cases and the court's imposition of penalties, and happy to report back to the council after a year.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kirchner?
Just a question for the law director. Do we need this as amended?
I believe there's going to be a motion to amend, but-
Okay. And do we need a suspension because it's third reading?
No, no suspension is necessary.
So I would move to approve as suspended?
Well, there's-
I mean as-
Motion to amend.
Excuse me.
There's been no motion to amend, I believe, at this point.
Yes.
Okay, a motion to amend and a second. Julie?
Read the amendment.
Read the amendment?
Correct.
Which is?
I think the motion would be to amend pursuant to the following language. And as I understand, the amendment is proposed to be to Section 3 of the ordinance, Section 919 penalty, substituting the current bold language with brand-new bold language.
Thank you. Julie, please call a roll.
No, again, the amendment still needs to be read, sir.
We have to read it. That wasn't substitution. Okay. The amended portion says, states, whoever violates subsections AI or AII of Section 919.01, comma, Section 919.02, comma, or subsection B of Section 919.03 is guilty of an unclassified misdemeanor and subject to a fine not to exceed $2,000 and an order of restitution.
So I move to approve with that language. Amended.
Second. I don't think roll needs to be called on the amended.
As amended.
That's what we're going to do.
Second, as amended.
We have a motion to amend and a second. Julie, now it's been read, we can call the roll.
Yes, sir.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-067 has been approved. Managers' report. Ken, and welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Glad to be back. Council, we have an open-cut repayment, open-cut request at 6344 South Cedarwood Drive from JLF Homes LLC for the purpose of installation of a new six-inch sanitary sewer connection. And the engineering department has reviewed this, and they concluded the work cannot be completed without the open cut because the existing main is under the asphalt at this time. Ask for your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Trick or treat in the City of Mentor will be on Halloween, Sunday, October 31, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. On a related note, due to expected inclement weather last Friday, the Halloween Party for Dogs will be postponed to this Friday, October 22, from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Mentor Dog Park. This is a free Halloween party, just for dogs and their owners, obviously. There will be, although, some dogs, if they come on their own, would probably still be welcome. There will be contests and prizes. Dogs must be up to date on vaccinations, be licensed, and not be in heat to visit the dog park. Children must be accompanied by an adult. So call 444-440-974-5720 for more information. Council, I'm pleased to report that last Wednesday, CNN news crew based out of New York was actually in our city filming a follow-up story on the good work of our Mentor 911 Communication Center. The story is scheduled to air on a CNN program titled "Beyond the Call of Duty," which is a CNN program that explores inspiring stories about police and other first responders who go above and beyond their performance expectations. The Mentor story showcases the excellent work performed by Mentor dispatcher Tim Johns back in this past June, when he took a 911 call from a mother whose infant was not breathing. Tim's actions helped save the child's life, and we are told that the story will air sometime in the near future, and when we have an update, we'll give council and the public an update on that. So, once again, positive work in the city. Chief, congratulations, and both chiefs, on the efforts there. You know, our dispatchers, as you already know, do a great job every day, and this is just one good example of it. The Mentor Avenue widening project at the specialty grocer is progressing well. Roadway stone base was placed last week, and sidewalk areas were excavated. First Energy began its light pole relocation, and the installation of underground conduit for the traffic signals has also begun. Weather permitting, base asphalt pavement could be placed as early as this week. The traffic signal completion schedule is probably the only thing that's up in the air, and the grocer is scheduled to open in early February of 2022. Our only concern there was the relocation of the pole, First Energy's poles. Now that that's happening, we'll be ready to open when they are. We may have some temporary signals there, worst-case scenario, but that should work out.
Good.
And then finally, council, the Mentor Lagoons Marina will close on Sunday, October 31 for the season. All docked boats must be out of the water by that date, and the public ramp will remain open throughout the year. That's it.
And here, I thought the only problem with that unknown grocer was the naming rights that the-
Yes.
Contest.
Yes. The mystery grocer, right?
Clerk's correspondence, Julie?
Council's in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court's September 2021 month-end report, and also transfer of stock for Speedway's, all four locations, for their liquor license.
Commission committee reports. Meeting minutes. Community Arts Commission, July 1, 2021, and August 5, 2021. Municipal Planning Commission, September 9, 2021. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, September 4, 2021. Old business. Hearing none. New business.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kirchner?
I would like to move to eliminate a few dates from our agenda for next year. Those dates are July 19 and July 13. No, I'm sorry. July 19 and August 2 and December 20.
Second.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marne?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
And secondly, I would like to say hello to Richard, or Michael Rowan, who's here tonight, performing his student government class duties from Lakeland College. Welcome, and I hope you enjoy the meeting tonight, Michael.
Any other new business? Hearing none?
I think he's old enough to even be in college. Welcome.
We said the same thing down here.
Persons before council. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have four minutes to speak. We have one speaker tonight, Zachary Weaver.
Hello, Zach Weaver, 9214 Loritz Drive, Mentor, Ohio, 44060. I wanted to talk today about corruption and professionalism. I found professionalism lacking and corruption festering in this building lately. I was recently criminally charged with the heinous crime of having a dangerous tree on my property. Only problem is, I didn't and still don't have a dangerous tree on my property. This council passed our tree ordinance not so many years ago, and I doubt that if you knew how that simple ordinance would be corrupted and enforced, you would never have voted on it. So let's start with my case. I was notified on or about December 30, 2020, that I had a dangerous tree on my property, and I had to cut it down. I informed the ordinance officer that the tree was alive and healthy. She replied that the tree must be removed, or I would face charges. I thought this was a little extreme. A few days later, I received a notice of violation in the mail informing me that my dangerous tree needed to be removed. The notice included a report from a third-party arborist. I requested to appeal the violation, and I was told by our code enforcement supervisor that the decision was final, and if I did not remove the tree, I would be criminally charged, and a judge would decide my fate. Lost my place, so I apologize here. I immediately requested documents from the city regarding its tree policy, and specifically my tree. Our esteemed assistant city law director lost my request. I later spoke to him personally, and he stated he would look into my request and ensured I would receive my documents. This did not happen. that the decision was final, and if I did not remove the tree, I would be criminally charged, and a judge would decide my fate. Lost my place, so I apologize here. I immediately requested documents from the city regarding its tree policy and specifically my tree. Our esteemed assistant city law director lost my request. I later spoke to him personally, and he stated he would look into my request and ensured I would receive my documents. This did not happen. After three requests in over two months, I received some of the documents I requested. What I found is stunning. First, our independent third-party arborist has sided with the city 891 times out of 891 times. Remember, an arborist's report is only needed if a tree is living. 891 times out of 891 times, our untrained code enforcement officers have correctly identified living trees as dangerous. Coincidence? I'm sure. Our independent third-party arborist is being paid about $30,000 a year by this city. Our independent third-party arborist is using templates for his report that are intellectual property of his competitors. Really shows a high level of professionalism when you're using other people's templates and you've stolen their property. Our independent third-party arborist is turning in his reports unsigned. Again, high level of professionalism. Our independent third-party arborist is turning in his reports with city letterhead embedded into them. He doesn't even put his company logo on the reports. He's using city letterhead. I believe that's a significant problem. Our independent third-party arborist is turning in his reports as editable Microsoft Word documents. Why are we allowing or requiring reports to be turned in in Microsoft Word? Again, where's the professionalism? Our city code enforcement officer took this fully editable report, and imagine this, edited it to say what she wanted. The report was then converted into a non-editable format and used as the sole evidence to charge me with a crime.